It's six o'clock and I'd like to open up the meeting. We just lost Paul Sarudy. He's gone to take care of a fire. He may or may not be back before the meeting is over. So at this point, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
None by me.
Diana? I have had a request today for somebody wanted to know about if there's anything going on with Ainsworth Road. Do you want me to talk about that in the clerk's report or?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
I can give you the latest update. I think I've already shared it at a previous select board meeting, but.
No, nothing. She just commented that it's getting worse.
Okay.
There was any, any update.
Okay. All right. Well, yeah, let's talk about it under the town clerk's report. Let's see, any public comment? Hearing none. I would make a motion. Actually, I can't do that is, but I guess it seems how we only have two of us, Brian. I guess you can make the motion and I'll second it and then we'll go from there. I know that Paul has seen them and signed them, so we're good there.
Motion to accept the bills. Is that it?
Yep.
Yep.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay. And then do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for the February 8th, 2021 select board meeting?
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we're ready for the town clerk's report, Diana.
Jesus. That's bad. Okay. I did get a call today from the neighbor on Ainsworth Road who was asking whether there had been any updates. Was aware that there was one visit by the compliance officer, her man R. And she said it's just keeps getting worse as far as junk accumulating.
Okay, well, I know when I spoke to Ryan McCall, he had paid a visit. It was probably over a month ago. He spoke with Tanya Daigle. And he gave, had given them a month to clean up and come into compliance with the number of unregistered, uninspected vehicles on the property.
That was on the Ainsworth Road side?
On Ainsworth Road, yeah, on the, on the Daigle property, which I assume is what the neighbor is complaining about.
Yeah.
So what I'll do is I'll do a check in with him because I think it has been a month. And see if there's anything, either just let him know that as far as the neighbors are concerned, things are not getting better, but are getting worse. And he would probably pay another visit, I would imagine.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah. Okay. So, and I'd be glad to contact this, the person, Diana, if you want to send me an email of who that was, I'll let them know.
Okay.
Is that enough there?
So what else? Town clerk report. So we've, so far we've got about 75 ballots returned.
Okay.
Which I guess it's good. I hope it doesn't mean the hundreds are going to show up on town meeting day and get in their ballot. If that happens, that, that happens. I mean, 700 and some ballots were sent out.
Yeah.
And we usually get maybe 100, 125 people at town meeting day, but since more people have ballots now, maybe they'll pay more attention.
You would think that there should be more, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see how it does, does turn out. I would think that it would definitely be more.
Yeah, I would have guessed a lot more. Yeah.
We got another week.
We haven't got, just last week I found out that we had not mailed back our cards that go in the tabulator. The memory cards. So I sent those special delivery and they're going to turn around and reprogram them with our new ballots and hopefully send them right back. So we'll probably have work to do over the weekend if we, it doesn't come in in time. Okay, Robin?
So what do you mean by new ballots? Ballots for people to fill out at?
Yeah, I mean the ballots that we have created for this year.
Okay.
But with the cards that were still in there were from the general election.
Oh.
Since it was our first time, I didn't realize we were supposed to send those back. And we did. So I still haven't lined up all my ballot clerks and election workers. I am trying to line up some people to take the ballot boxes to Hardwick and stay around and do some counting. Now, did you volunteer for that?
I said that I would do that. And I could be, you know, at some point that I have a 3:30 appointment with my dentist, but otherwise on Tuesday I could spend some time at the town hall.
Okay. I'll let you know if you're needed.
Okay.
I was hoping you could, or somebody, or I could ask Greg to just clean up downtown with snow and stuff. Robin and Bill, or maybe just Robin, but they did a lot of shoveling this weekend, but the, a lot of snow that could be removed if they bring the loader down.
Okay. Do you mean like in front of, front of the old, the, the new old store?
Well, you know, right along the, the island there, the inside of the island can be scraped down and they could try to do some cleaning up. If they, if they want to clean up in front of the old store, all they have to do is ask people to move their cars and.
Seems like the cars aren't there much during the day, but I will, I'll get ahold of Greg and make that request.
Thank you.
I'm sure he'll be fine.
If they drag in front of the steps at the town hall from the railing back.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
And actually, you know, if, if they've got to that in the next couple of days with the warm weather, anything else that might be there, it might kind of melt away.
That'd be nice.
Yeah. Of course, who knows what we'll get before town meeting day. But at least some of it will be gone. Yeah, I'll, I'll call him tomorrow morning. Let me make a note of that so I don't forget.
So Robin's going to come to work every day this week and we'll try to get some more, try to get ready for next week and try to get some more training done here and there.
Okay.
Hope she'll hire me to stay on a little bit afterwards for a few months.
Till spring.
I can't tell whether she's feeling confident or not.
I have an appointment question, the different town officials. We usually try to appoint folks, you know, the first meeting after town meeting day. Do you want me to try to figure out who's who and who to call or, or does the town clerk want to do that?
Well, I don't know, you know, what the hurry is, but your next meeting won't be until March.
It'll be March 8th.
Yeah.
March, March 8th.
Yeah.
So.
There aren't that many that have to be called, but.
Right. And I should be, I'll, I'll do that. You're probably going to be busy enough with this election stuff. It should be pretty obvious from the town report who I need to call.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. All right. And then I guess we'll see after election day, what elected officials might need to be appointed. That might take a little bit longer because we'll have to find somebody to, willing to do that too. I'm not going to worry about that right now.
Oh, like auditors.
Yeah.
Can't do much about that. Um, so I was thinking about ordering a new select board handbook for the new select person.
That would be nice.
He won, but you have to pay like 40 something dollars for a download from the LCT. It seems too cheap.
No.
Cheap seats.
I thought they kind of gave it to you as digitally for free. And then if you wanted a paper copy, you had to pay for it.
Not anymore.
Oh, not anymore.
Do you think we should get one anyways?
Yeah, we should.
Yeah.
Think.
Yeah. Trying to clean up some things around here.
You can do that in your assistant town clerk role too, I suppose.
Yeah, right. Remember how to do dog licenses again. I might let Robin do those for a while because she's really getting into it.
Yep.
So, yeah. Counting on, fortunately, I don't have to worry about counting for Hazen and all of that hard stuff.
Right.
I'll be busy here.
Right.
And I don't have to run back to the office and put everything in the state system because they don't care.
It's not a state thing, right?
Yeah, I don't think I've, I've got to call Alberta though. I don't think I'm going to even have a checklist to send her, but even if I did have a checklist, we're going to have checked off the people who brought in their town ballots, whether or not they bring in their school ballots. We don't really care. We're not going to get a separate checklist of those.
And there might not be names on those. Is that correct?
Well, they'll come in the envelopes that have a name on them.
Okay.
Yeah. So if I needed to, I could, could do that. I could just make a copy of the checklist that I'm using now, but that doesn't guarantee that everybody whose name is on there, on the checklist as having returned a ballot, returned both of their school ballots.
But somebody could bring their school ballots in on town meeting day at the town hall and just stuff them in the box and there, there wouldn't be a name on it, although they would do a check in.
Get checked in, yeah.
There'd be a check in, right?
So we'll see.
Yeah.
And I think Steve went to that, hopefully went to that webinar about how to run a virtual international meeting.
He did. I just got, it was an email from him when I got home from work today and we're going to set up a two-person trial Zoom meeting. So just so he can get the hang of it.
Good.
Some either sometime before Thursday. I'm glad he sent me the email because he was thinking the meeting was on Friday night. So.
Yeah, I've only sent out three or four different notices. People don't pay attention. I think what I'll do also probably either Wednesday or Thursday is send out and to the email blast, you know, so they'll have like a hot link they can just click on.
That would be a good idea. Maybe front porch forum too. You.
Do that too. Okay.
Just, could the person who, who, hang on a second Diana, could the person who's joined the meeting on the phone identify themselves just for the, for the meeting minutes for the record? The phone number ending in 528?
Where'd they go?
Uh-oh.
You scared them off.
Yeah. They thought they could be anonymous.
So did that person hang up? Did, did I, I, I got disconnected. So I don't know if my request to the person on phone, did they give their name? Looks like they're gone now.
They do seem to be gone.
Okay. All right. Well, hope I didn't scare them away.
I didn't see a name pop up up top anywhere.
Yeah, no, there was no name, just a bit of a number. Okay. So anything else, Diana, at all for?
Well, I've got, trying to get all my recording done before I leave office. And then hopefully I'll be kept on as the recording clerk for a little while because that's going to take some training. And I can come in probably one day a week and clean that up.
Okay.
And I'm going to, starting tomorrow, I think I'm going to suggest that Robin answer the phone every time it rings. I keep grabbing it automatically and getting used to all the crazy calls that we get.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Anything, nothing else? Brian, do you have any questions for Diana at all or Robin for that matter?
No.
Okay. I don't either.
I do think, I was thinking about just demoting myself to assistant clerk and maybe just hanging on to my vacation and sick leave and just carrying it forward rather than getting done totally and cashing out on that and starting over because probably be easier to not have to redo a whole new employee.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that, but I guess Brandy would probably be the one to have the final say on that. So, but whatever, whatever works for, for you and, and Brandy and her, her bookkeeping. Okay. So I don't see Brandy here. I didn't get, really get any, she had financials for us at the town office, but no kind of printed out report like last time. No, I didn't see anything there.
So there is some stuff down there to sign. Michael, I haven't been down yet.
There is, yeah, just the payroll, time sheets and the bills.
I'll get down there tomorrow. Do that.
Yeah. And the, and there's a, a meeting minutes also there.
I forgot about the certificate of highway mileage. Thank you for signing that.
Yeah.
Missed that in the emails over the last couple of months. They used to just send a piece of paper and we'd sign it and send it back. But my question for you is when you did the, the spur up at the old Cabot, old Pory Road, you never added that officially to the town highway mileage, did you?
No, it's a class four road still. So we'd probably, let's see, 100 feet is how much of a mile?
It wouldn't be worth it. We don't get money for class four roads anyway.
We don't. No. We do, I do still need to kind of officially register it. And I have this list going. I'm going to connect with Shawna Clifford, the district seven manager and ask her about that. I think there is some kind of official form, but it would be a fraction of a fraction. So.
Yeah.
We shouldn't worry about it. It's just a class four anyway.
So I checked off that there were no changes in the total mileage.
Right. Yeah.
Much.
I think that's fair. Okay. Um, so one thing that Brandy had wanted us to authorize was some kind of credit card authorization so that she apparently, you know, the road crew has a credit card and Greg used it. And now the bank wants some kind of form signed by the select board and actually a copy of the minutes. So actually, Brian, you and I are here. Maybe we can, I'll explain the situation and you and I can discuss it. And I guess if we were to authorize Brandy to be, have her name on that credit card, that would, I think that would solve the problem.
Okay.
So, so let me just finish explaining. So the town highway crew does have a credit card and, you know, they've had one for quite a while and this hasn't been an issue before. Beg your pardon, Diana?
You or they don't have?
They do have.
Okay.
And they have had for a while now. And this hasn't become an issue before. So I'm not sure. Maybe it's a new form that's required. I don't know. But anyway, so Greg used the card. And obviously, you know, a bill came in. And the bank won't let Brandy pay for it until she is authorized to be a sig. What do you call it? A?
Signatory.
Signatory. Thank you. Signatory on the card. And there's a form that needs to be filled out. And what, one of the things that they're requiring is that there be either minutes from a select board meeting or some type of authorization beyond the town treasurer for the town treasurer to be a signatory on the card.
So we need that by motion?
Yeah, we probably should make it official by motion.
You want me to do that or?
Yep. No, go ahead.
We want to make a motion to authorize Brandy to be the signatory on the credit card for the town highway crew.
Right. And I'll second that. Any discussion at all?
Nope.
Okay. I don't have anything else other than what I've already said. So I would, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Good. So that's a quorum. We're good.
Yep.
So that'll be in the minutes and then Brandy can send that on to the bank and fill out the form. And I think, I think we'll be okay with that.
Yep.
So Chuck has some family visiting and he asked if there wasn't anything burning issues for him that he would like to not be here tonight. So, and I gave him permission not to be.
Well, that's good.
Not to worry about it and to enjoy his family visit. Okay. So there isn't much of a town report. I was going to try to catch in with Greg, but they were out plowing roads this morning and then I had to go to work. So.
Yeah, roads have been good.
Yeah. Yeah. And I, compliments kind of trickle in on that way the roads are being kept up this winter. So it's interesting. Now, we really haven't had a, an icing event yet this winter, which is kind of unusual. Although it sounds like we might get some later this week. So.
Really?
Yeah. So that's pretty much it for the town highway report, I guess, unless anybody else has anything to say under that subject.
What do I write here? No, nothing.
Yeah. Nothing, nothing major to report or something like that. So I have a brief Woodbury School update and I don't think, you know, I kind of figured I really don't need to do this in executive session with just the select board members. I know some people have been kind of, I did get a few calls about what's going on with the lease. And I've spoken to different people who, you know, kind of see that it's on the agenda, but it's discussed in the executive session. But the, the Woodbury Lease Committee, Norman, that can Patrick Flood and I met with the Union School District Lease Committee last Tuesday. And we were a little, well, the, the meeting in a nutshell is basically that they, the information from the Agency of Education about the state statute that states that towns cannot pay anything extra towards the school district for the operations of the school. That was shared with them by their lawyer at, at a meeting that the school district board had, Union School District Board. So what they have, what they suggested to us, the Woodbury, they, they basically are going to be paying for everything, all the costs for operating the school. Pretty much like they are doing this fiscal year, which was the third year of the merger, the merger lease. So they'll basically be paying the town a dollar. And, but they will be, they'll take over all of the financial expenses for the school. And this is for fiscal year 22, that this new lease. So there are some modified, yes, Diana?
Did, did you say that advice came from an attorney for the school district or?
No, this advice initially came, and actually I haven't shared this in a public meeting either. This advice came from the Agency of Education. I spoke with a woman named Donna Russo Savage. She was, and probably still is sort of oversees the whole merger project. And when I talked to her about this, she, she passed on my conversation and email to a fellow named Brad James, who was the financial manager for the Agency of Education. And he shared his thoughts that, you know, as far as the agency was concerned, if there was anything that showed up from a town paying for a school expense, chance that, there was a very good chance that the secretary of the agency would challenge that payment. So, and then, so that email from Brad was sent, I, you know, I shared that with our lawyer and he shared it with the school district's lawyer and the school district's lawyer confirmed Brad James' statement. So based, so that was shared with the Union School District Board in one of their meetings. I'm not quite sure when, in the past, recent past. And they pretty much determined from that, that they, you know, that they, and just to keep things pretty clear, that they would be paying for all of the expenses to operate the school. And so this lease for fiscal year 22, there are some changes that are being made to it because that wasn't the, you know, the last draft that we sent to them. That wasn't, that language wasn't in there. So there'll be, so there's still some work to do on the lease. But we pretty much came to an agreement during that meeting that this is what would happen. And did you get to hear that, Paul?
I just caught the very end of it.
Okay. So I'm kind of updating us on the, the Woodbury School and the lease.
Okay.
So Norman, Patrick and I had a meeting with the, the Union School District Lease Committee. And they had been shared, the, they were, the information that came from Brad James, the Agency of Education person that I shared with the select board in executive session, that was shared with them. So what they proposed to us was that the school district will pay for all of the school expenses for fiscal year 22. Basically, pretty much similar to what they've done this third year of the merger lease where they basically paid the town a dollar. And so there still needs to be some changes to the draft lease because that wasn't reflected in that language and the changes were not part of the draft that we had sent to them earlier.
It's pretty much as we discussed at the last meeting then?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, actually.
Better.
Yeah. Yes and no. There would, there will be no contingency fund. No.
None of that. Oh, wow. Okay.
None of that at all. It'll basically be, we won't be charging them or pay, you know, asking them to pay the town anything for lease, except the $1.
Oh, okay.
They will be paying for everything.
They're responsible for everything.
They're responsible for everything.
Are they going to be responsible for the plowing?
That's what will happen probably. And I need to talk to Brittany Currie, the financial person at the supervisor union. Either they'll, yes, they will be paying for the plowing. This is in fiscal year 22.
Yep. Next, next year. Yep.
And the town road crew, if they wish to. And the town road crew, um, if they wish to, I mean, we could submit a bid, just like other contractors, um, to do the plowing. Yeah. So one way or the other, they'll be, they'll be paying for.
Awesome, okay.
Yeah. And then the other thing that they, um, the other part of that discussion is, is that they, they would really, um, like the, the town to basically grant them ownership of the building. Going forward.
Oh, sure.
So, and we told them that we would be willing to discuss this with town residents, um, explore that possibility. It would just make things, okay, I know there'll be yays and nays.
Well, I mean, I mean, my, my, my view on that is it's, it's, it's been made relatively clear that the voters wanted to keep the building. I suppose we could put it before the voters again.
Right.
As long as we could buy it back.
Yes.
For a buck, you know?
Yeah. So we, we discussed what the scenario might be, you know, we didn't come to any solid conclusions, but there would definitely be, this would be something, this is not for next year. This is not for fiscal year 22. There isn't time to do that. So we have, you know, time and hopefully it will be past the pandemic. So we could actually have a
Real meeting.
Meet together to discuss this. We'll probably start discussing it just to get it out there, get that thought out there. Um, and I'm not advocating either way, but, um,
Either. I just, I know what our marching orders were last time. That's kind of what I've been trying to do.
Yep, same here. Um, and so, and I, you know, I warned them that, you know, we're willing to discuss this. We're, you know, what we would, so what we would try to do is, um, you know, continue a discussion with the school district board, not just the lease committee, but the whole board. And come to some kind of, um, understanding, probably working out a draft. I guess I wouldn't call it a lease. I don't know what we would call it. Um, and there would definitely be conditions, um, and, um, from both sides, I'm sure. Um, but, um, and then we would present it at, uh, select board meetings, we'd have a town hearing meeting. And if town residents did not want to do it, you know, and then we'll go back to the lease. Really, you know, thinking about it some, there isn't much difference really. What their, their, their main, you know, some of the things that they were concerned about is, you know, like paying for the, um, fire, um, catastrophe kind of insurance on a building that they don't own. They, you know, there's kind of their, I don't, they don't feel uneasy about that. Even though there's language in the lease that covers that. And they just figure that it would make things simpler. Um, and, you know, probably it would.
Probably would.
But there, I think either way, there's going to be complications. So especially on the, you know, the different terms that the town, um, would want to have, um, with, with such a situation. And obviously, um, you know, for whatever, you know, it would probably be the kind of thing where it'd be like a a quick claim D where they would acquire the building for a dollar. And obviously the town, once they, if they decide that they are not going to use it as a place of education, that the town would get it back for that dollar.
Sure, okay.
And, and there'd be all, you know, it would be, there'd be plenty of safeguards and, um, you know, different, um, understandings from the discussion that would pretty much cover the town's, um, concerns, um, before we did anything. Um, and if we, and if there are, you know, things in it that we don't like and, and they're pretty adamant about keeping them, then we'll just say, um, sorry, I guess. I mean, I hope. Yeah. And, and we'll see what the, what town residents, um, you know, and this would be an official, we a special town meeting. There would be an official vote. Um, it wouldn't be just to show, you know, like, what do you think about this? Because, uh, it would be a, that, you know, the bottom line and, and just exploring this is to try to keep the school as a school.
Right.
You know, and that's what I've been hearing, you know, different people, um, that have called me in the past month or so, you know, um, that's their concern. Um, and they're mostly, um, younger folks with families, um, that really want their children to, um, not have to go to Hardwick or Greensboro or wherever. And they want their children to be able to go to the Woodbury School. So, um, so this will be kind of a, um, the beginning of a process. But the first thing, we'll, we'll get the lease finalized and, and hopefully gets, get it signed and be ready for fiscal year 22.
Well, that simplifies the money part of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the uncertainty too.
Right.
So, um, so that's pretty much the, the update. Um, uh, right, I, you know, I met with Norman and Patrick and we're gonna work on, um, a revised copy of the lease. And I think, um, some of the folks from the lease committee are doing the same on their end. And we'll kind of work that back and forth, um, probably without getting the lawyers involved until we're kind of in an agreement.
Right. Do we all like what's there and then let the lawyer look at it?
Yeah, we've already spent a thousand dollars on the lawyer.
That's easy to do.
Yeah, I know it. Yeah. So, um, I think we'll tr- try to be in agreement so that there isn't a lot of haggling with the lawyers. The ka-chinking of the, the clock on their end.
An expensive meter.
Yeah, at $300 an hour.
Yes, it is. Not the most expensive attorney I've, attorney we've ever paid for.
No.
Get a telecom attorney.
Yeah. So it does feel like we're pretty close to, I mean, pretty close to an agreement. It's just working out the least details and then
Okay.
There'll be this process, um, to, to work out something to bring before the town residents for, for a decision, decision that way. And I do want to point out to you folks, I, I know we, I, there was a really great article about rural schools in Seven Days, um, newspaper last week. Um, I have a link, Norman provided a link to it. It, I would really encourage everybody to read it. It was, um,
If you have the link, go ahead and email it to me. I would be glad.
I will. Forward, Norman sent a, an email response when I, I set out, um, that has the email link on it. Would be, I think, um, I might even put it on Foot Porch Forum. Um, it would be great for folks to read that. It was pretty, you know, there are other towns that have merged that aren't all that happy about it.
They're trying to un-merge.
They're trying to un-merge or they're trying, they're trying to figure out how to save their school really.
Right.
And, and there's a lot of good dialogue about why a small school in a small town is important. Even beyond its community value. Um, so it was just a, it was a good article. Okay, so, um, anything, any questions about the, this Woodbury School lease or the update on the school?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Diana or Robin, anything?
Finally hear about it. I, I didn't, I never understood why the whole thing was in executive session to begin with.
Well, we were discussing the lease and, and the amounts of money and blah, 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 and, and, um, and never really coming to a decision because whatever we discussed, we had to send back.
Right. Because we can't really discuss the terms of a contract and response, uh, publicly because the other party would be listening in on you.
Yeah, but there aren't any other parties. That's the funny part of it.
Well, the school board is the other party.
Yeah.
The school board is.
Yeah. And these meetings are recorded. So if it was discussed publicly, um,
Right.
So, yeah, that's why.
Definitely put us at a disadvantage.
Yes. Yeah. Okay, well, well, um, let's move on to the personnel policy. I'm gonna, um, do my s- screen sharing thing again here. And usually I fumble around before I get there. So hang in there.
Uh, Chuck, Chuck didn't show it. The, I didn't see Chuck here.
Yeah, um, hang on a second. Um, let me just, yeah, so you, you are out at that, uh, Chuck, um, sent me an email. He has some family visiting down in Florida.
Oh, fine. That's what he should do then. Makes a lot of sense. I just wondered if those guys shouldn't have been out. But there's probably three inches of snow on the road. I had to take my pickup up. There's no way the, but I guess we'll just let them get out in the morning. It's
Okay.
It's, uh, not good. And I had to one complaint from our, um, our regular complainer and I'll, I'll call Chuck about it. He claims that the, uh, road department were, was, uh, rude to him when he called them today. So I will let Chuck call and talk to him. I just spoke with him, but I told him I had to get back to this meeting. So I
Okay. Well, I can imagine they weren't too pleased to hear.
Well, the problem today, and that's why I'm not real fussy about dragging them out. It's been snowing all day.
Yeah.
And as soon as you, it snowed an inch as soon in an hour and you're gonna, there's just nowhere to keep those roads open completely all, all night. So.
Okay.
Just so you're aware of it, I'll, I'll call Chuck and, and pass the, uh, information along to him.
Okay, yeah. So let's see, let me get to the screen share. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Great. Okay, uh, let's see, I'm gonna move you guys over here. All right, so, um, let's get to where we need to be. So I'm pretty much, we're pretty much gonna be looking at the comp time, um, language and then the, uh, the pay scale is, um, so let. All right. So here we are, paid leave time. This is pretty much as it was before. And let's see. Okay, here we are. Um, so, um, let's see. This, the stuff in red, um, was pretty much there at the last meeting. Things in green, there was some, uh, text in green. So, but the second paragraph, um, I was trying to, um, kind of add a sentence or two, Paul, to explain the year A, year B thing. So I'm just kind of wondering how, how you guys feel about the clarity of that, that paragraph, the language in it.
I, I think it's clear enough, uh, with a little explanation when an employee starts so that they know what the rules are.
Okay.
The, the, the worst part would just be, um, again, Brandy's not here, but it, would she have a way to track that?
Yeah. I, I think she does. But yeah, we need to, there's, there's a bit of stuff in this personnel policy I need to sit down with Brandy and go over. Um, hopefully when, when, um,
So, I don't know what Brian thinks. I'm good with this language as long as Brandy has a way to track the year the time was earned.
Okay.
I asked her that today and she said she does.
Okay. Because again, it solves the problem Chuck had of them feel like they had to use up all that time this year. They could, they have a whole nother year and a half if they earned it today to use up that time.
Yeah.
And then they can spread it out a little bit. And that kind of the balance between no comp time and then obviously before they, I, one employee on his time sheet had, uh, um, change all my overtime to comp time. But again, this, under this policy, that would have to be approved by Chuck.
Yeah, it would. Yep.
Thought you were gonna have something in there that it was gonna be by the first of May that they had to use it up by the second year. And not June 30th.
Oh, I do remember Chuck said we-
I remember that too. Yeah, yeah.
Change that date to May 30th.
So, um, through the pay period, which includes, okay, yes, I do remember that. Um, so let me make a note of that, that they have to, um, clear with Chuck the use of the comp time by the first of May. So this is my memory work. Let me, remind me if I remember and write. I remember that we, um, we're gonna, if they wanted to use up comp time as they were getting close to the end of the fiscal year, they had to, get the okay for when they would take that comp time by May 1st to cover May and June. So they'd be like a two.
Right. And remember anytime earned this winter, they have this year and next year to use it. They don't have to use it by the end of this year, this fiscal year.
Okay. So I'm making a note of that to remember to put that in there. Um,
I'm sorry, uh, did you say they have to get approval by May 1st? Or they have to use it by May 1st?
They have to get approval, um, by May 1st.
Okay. So it can be worked into the plan or whatever.
Correct. So that Chuck's not left without any help.
Yeah. And he hasn't left with somebody taking all their comp time at the last minute. That, that was part of the issue.
Right.
When this came up is that, oh, I've got a week of comp time left. Let's see, there's a week left before the
Right. Because now if they earn a 40 hours, they can carry it right over into next, you know, past July 1st. And, you know, there's no, there's no urgency to use it.
Yeah.
Till next year.
So, um, and then, so we were gonna leave some of the bullets and take some out. And, um, what I'm, was aware of is that some of the ones that we had decided not to leave in were already in the text.
Yes, yep.
Like this first one, an employee shall accrue a maximum of 40 hours of comp time. In the, uh, opening paragraph, the last sentence says the maximum allowable compensatory time off that can be accrued is 40 hours.
Right.
Should I strike that from that paragraph and just leave it in the bullets?
I think I just take out the bullets and leave the paragraph.
Okay.
That's right out of the union contract and that's been pretty well vetted by the labor board.
Yeah. Okay. So, um, so I'll, I'll take that one out. And then the next three, I think we wanted to keep in, um, let me get the thing moving again. So, um,
Right. That's all should stay. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And then that last one that we have crossed out already, um, we pretty much will have language in that first paragraph that covers.
What says about using it. Yeah.
Okay, okay.
It's just, it's a little more restrictive time. Getting to use your comp time's a little more restrictive.
Yep, yeah. But, yeah, in a good way too, though.
Yeah. But it, I think it solves the problem of our needs and their needs.
Yes, I agree. Yeah. Yeah, it's a good, a good meeting point. Okay, so I'll, I'll move on. I think there's, all of this we discussed last time. There haven't been any changes. Um, so this whole insurance thing, I want to go over this with Brandy. And this was something that I wondered should be deleted because the town clerk and the town treasurer don't work 30 hours a week, but I wanted to
Okay.
I just highlighted it with that question. Yeah, the only time that would, would be, you know, in the past, we have had a town clerk and a town treasurer that are, that are the same person, but and then obviously they did work 30 hours a week. We haven't had for a while. So let's see, let's get to that page here. So I haven't been able to talk to Brandy about, you know, how, if she is able to set up, um, an Excel spreadsheet that, that would be, um, you know, kind of malleable if, if there were changes, cost of living changes, if it would change everything automatically or whatever.
Right. Because what we want to do is on that pay chart is if we give a 2% raise, say this summer, which we're not, it would raise all of those steps 2% when we did that. That way it's all, the, the pay scale doesn't get antiquated.
Right, yeah.
And then people would receive their steps on the step dates.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure that could be done. Um, you know, um, I could probably check in with Skip Lindsay to see if that's possible. He would know that, um, right off. And, and then, you know, just kind of waiting for Brandy to get past the, the things that are troubling her right at the moment. So that we can, um, get this part figured out. But I put in the, um, I put in some text here at the beginning. And then I, I brought up the steps, um, that you had sent Paul and kind of put those prior to.
On one page, yeah.
Yeah, on one page. I had one question. What does EOP mean?
End of probation.
End of probation.
So if you know, if you, if the employees left on the day after their probation ends, if you haven't terminated them, then their pay would automatically go to step two.
Okay.
And then one year from step two, they would get step three and so on.
Okay, yeah. All right. So, um, so how do you feel about the, the kind of introductory? So how do you feel about the the kind of introductory text, I'll call it? So I kept the step chart so far the way it has been, but explained that it would be used to establish a base pay and. Hiring and the hiring of an employee, like when we hired Griz, he obviously had many years of work experience, so we did. Him out at step one, we kind of determined. I don't know how we actually determined that, but we did.
Well, it's a, it's a negotiation, basically, I say I want this much, we're only gonna pay this much, that's how that works.
Yeah, I think that is how it works.
Yeah, but then we slot them in somewhere in the chart, so.
Yeah. So then it was just an explanation of of that.
I think that sentence looks fine and in it, you know, if you don't aren't do a step, if we raise the. Do the cost of living increase, it would raise everybody's pay, that percentage and the pay chart.
Yeah, yeah.
We just gotta be able to make it easy so Brandy can just punch it in and it would magically change all those cells.
Yeah, I don't know how that, how that could ever be easy.
Well, I definitely don't know how, so.
Not as, it's not an Excel chart now.
No, I.
What I'd be willing to do is go through this chart and figure out what percentage each of these are and you.
They're about 3%.
Yeah, we've already.
Some of them are two something and.
Right, that's what I said, they're about, is what I. Right.
I don't, I don't think that's necessary, Diana, I know that I've seen.
Show you what the, what the percentages are, so you.
Because the step isn't associated with the annual increase, the step goes by years.
Right.
I I would just want that so that the chart stayed valid. If we had a way to raise all these amounts, if we only gave people a 1% annual raise, it would raise every cell 1%.
I know, I know that can be done, I've seen Skip Lindsay working in Excel spreadsheet.
Sure, so somebody, I know I can't do it, but somebody probably can.
Yeah, and he, you know, he or Brandy or the two of them together. Could set that chart up and then Brandy would know how to to make it work, that's my. Hope that that's what can happen, but and I've seen it done, I mean, I just watched it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm dangerous enough, so don't don't put it near me.
First thing that would have to be done is the whole chart would have to be typed in.
Put into a spreadsheet, correct.
Yes, it would have to be put into a spreadsheet, yes. Yeah. So, so for now, I guess we'll just keep the figures as they are, that's.
And that would be our starting date, if she can do it, this would be our starting date and then from here on, if like, I think, would we do a 1% or 1 and 1/2% for July 1st? I think we would have to raise this chart, so by then we'd have to figure out how to do it.
So I'm just gonna write that down, I. 1 and 1/2% for a cost of living adjustment.
Then we, I think that's what we decided, I don't remember.
That sounds, that that sounds good.
I think that's what we budgeted for.
Yep. Okay, so. That's pretty much, you know, we just need to go over, actually, let me get to the. The insurance appendix. So I, what I'd like to do is. Go over the whole insurance thing with Brandy, I know that we we no longer have the Blue Cross Blue Shield Vermont Health connects platinum plan, it's an MVP plan. I'm pretty sure it's a platinum plan also. And and the terms, you know, that the town pays 85% of the premium, that still holds. So I just, and I. I wanted to just check in with Brandy about the the insurance stuff. Yeah, and that's pretty, pretty much it for the. And then there's the the drug and alcohol testing. There's a link to the manual. And I think I have a copy of the manual and I'm pretty sure that there's a copy at the town garage too. But, and that's pretty much it, and the personnel policy where. Any other thoughts on this, other than the insurance and the the getting some kind of Excel spreadsheet spreadsheet for that?
I think, can we send the substance of it to the the LCT attorney so we can get, because I know Chuck was important to get this resolved before spring maintenance?
Yeah.
I mean, other than the pay chart and so that insurance stuff, I mean, I think the rest of it is ready for a lawyer review.
I think you're right, I will kind of finalize all of the red and the green ink, I'll make those changes and I will send it to. There's a person named Jill Muir at at VLCT that's been reviewing this for us, she's the HR person there.
Okay.
And I'll get, she's has reviewed it for us in the past. I'll send it to her. And maybe I'll check in with Skip about that spreadsheet and because just to confirm that that he. That it is possible to have a chart that would function that way. And then as soon as Brandy is kind of back in the picture pretty consistently of try to sit down with her and. I mean, I I would like to have this. Pretty much approved by the select board and and moving forward both for. Springtime and for the hiring of a new employee so that we can have this to to show to them when during the during the hiring process. Okay.
I have one more thing.
Yes, oh, and obviously, go ahead, Diana.
Under the, can you go back to the insurance part?
Yes, yeah, hang on. Any, any particular part?
Part about disability, life and disability.
Hey, hang on.
There you go.
So there's life.
The community's shellified as a town clerk and treasurer. Okay. I thought I had seen that that had been. Did, deleted.
No.
Maybe not, I mean, it's not really very much of anything, but it's. Okay, come on.
Okay, and do you want to check out the disability too?
Well, there was a. I get, it's all in one policy.
Yeah. Yeah, this is kind of. Skip put this together just to have everything, it's also in the policy, this is just kind of a one page or two page. Synopsis or summary of of the health benefits. Or the different benefits, they're all health benefits.
Thank you.
Okay. I had something I was gonna say and now I've forgotten what it was.
Make notes, Michael.
Yeah, well, it was, it was.
I lose the note.
I did, I did make some notes of some of the other things I. I forgot, so I'm glad that Robin remembered that May 1st thing, because that that. That was forgotten from earlier, what was it? Well, it's gone. Guess it wasn't too important.
One more thing.
Okay, yeah.
This is really not about the policy, I just wondered if you want me to keep doing your minutes.
If you are willing to do that, it would be appreciated.
Yes, it would be.
Alright.
Yeah, it does save me quite a bit of time and and I guess it's maybe after town meeting, we should start looking for a. You wouldn't happen to want to be a select board secretary, would you, Diana?
Well, it depends what's involved, I don't want to do charts of. Whatever that truck stuff is, but.
Oh, okay.
Like letters and stuff like that, I could do as the assistant clerk.
Okay, alright, we'll we'll discuss that in the future. Yeah, so I can't, I have forgotten what I was gonna bring up about this. Was like, yeah, I will make all of the changes, you know, get rid of the different colored texts and send it to Jill Muir. I'll do that this week. She usually gets back pretty quickly, it might be a week or so, we might have a response from her by the next select board meeting, if we're lucky.
Cool.
And and then when Brandy's able. We'll, we'll finish up the insurance part.
You know that she's having an operation Thursday this week.
I didn't know what it was, I knew it was. I knew that that was the choice that she had made.
I should have told her I could probably do it a lot cheaper.
Yeah, they told her at one point, like, three weeks to recover, but then she was led to believe that. Because of her age in general.
Not gonna happen.
It might not be as long, as long as she doesn't, you know, lift things that were more than five pounds or something.
Oh, they, they cut my wrist up, I'm on week 12 is Friday, for me, it is still not far from 100%, so. Though.
Well, I hope she doesn't push it, but.
Yeah, you want to go slow and heal properly.
So that's pretty much it on the. Agenda, is there anything else that anybody? Would like to discuss?
Questions.
Sure.
If the school goes to the union for that dollar. What happens to that generator?
The generator is the towns.
That is the towns.
Yeah.
Some of the stuff we would have to work out for sure, too.
And right now, how many buildings are on that generator?
The school and and the fire department, the fire station and the and the annex to Paul?
Yes.
Yeah.
Would it make sense to add the town hall to that? Just for emergency purposes?
It could be, could be done.
Because the wires come all the way down to the front on that side of the building, we would just have to do a either an overhead or an underground, probably people would want it underground. Come up to the panel right in that corner, we'd have to put a transfer switch on the building too.
Yeah.
It could be done, it probably made sense to do that, I know that's the evacuation center for the school if there's a problem, so.
Right.
Norman's, when he first designed that system, they were concerned of overloading the. Generator, so we can't run things like our compressor or the cook stoves, which they don't cook at the school anymore anyway, or the elevator, so. Long as, we haven't had an issue with misbehaving with the generator yet, so in all this time, since 20 years or so, 20 more than 20 years.
Yeah, that would probably a good, a good thing to do, and then I assume that, you know, if there is a new fire station, that we would probably hook the generator up to that too.
Oh, and our plan is we would have our own standalone. We'd be overloading the system pretty badly, so in that design, there is a another generator involved in that.
Alright, yeah. Yeah, and with, with a generator, Robin, before the merger happened, actually before. We even knew that we were gonna have to merge, the school district. Met with the select board and and the fire department was part of that meeting too, and the town pretty much agreed to take over any responsibility. For maintenance, etc., for the generator, so essentially the generator is, has, hasn't really even been, it was early on, it was. Part of the consideration in this new lease with the Union School District, but we we took it out. Pretty, pretty soon into the negotiations.
Always been for emergency management purposes.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it is some of the stuff we would have to resolve.
Yeah.
In that.
I mean, the school does benefit, if, you know, if the power goes out, that generator keeps the heat.
Right.
Or and if the kids were in school, it would keep a minimum amount of electricity, so.
Been very effective, it's been a very useful, very useful device.
Yeah.
I think we put it around 98, so it's been in a while.
Is the library on it too?
Uh, I don't know that, Brian. The library annex, Billy, I don't think it is.
I don't know the answer for sure.
Yeah.
Unless, if it has its own meter, it's not, if it's fed from the school, it could be, so I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I don't know the answer either, Larry, I bet Larry, Larry.
Larry would know.
Yeah.
Okay. And we talked about this one before, but on an ongoing basis, is there any chance that the town highway who plows the. Section in front of the town hall or fire station back drag in front of there on a regular basis?
Uh, yeah, we could make that request.
I mean, they would only have to do from that. Railing back through to the end of the ramp, from the railing towards the old store, I would be able to shovel that much, but I can't shovel that whole.
Well, also, we've got a a snow blower now too, Robin, at the fire station.
Yeah.
Which we could probably get you to use if they can't, I mean, I would talk to Chuck first because I'm in agreement with you, they should clean that out better than they do. Because one of the problems, even with the snow blower, I don't have any place to blow it.
Right.
Right. Yeah, I don't know how, if you, can they back? Drag with the the snowplow, I know the bucket loader can do that.
Can back drag with the small truck.
Small truck, okay.
And isn't that the one ton that does it through there?
It should be.
Yeah, yeah, I know the Low Pro had started out this winter doing it, but it has chains on.
And they were tearing up and and the intention of fixing that small truck was to. Use it for the driveways, because the the. Complain at the fire stations, they can't get close enough to the door.
Right.
You want to include that in my phone call with Chuck tomorrow, there, Robin? I'm more happy to, because I agree with you, we've had to help shovel that out before and again, any real, if you get a big snowfall and it's not, call me or Chance. And we can come down with, we've got a decent snow blower in the fire station now, we'll come clean it up.
Okay.
And I'm gonna be, you saw our conversation with the the Fire Academy's course, I will, when they give me an updated schedule, I will get it to you.
Okay.
Tell them, right now, everything's good except March 2nd, because they're gonna be voting in there.
Correct.
So I'll get that due as soon as possible.
And you're gonna get the water hooked back up, Paul?
Yeah, I can deal with that, well, I just gotta turn it on as long as nothing froze, we're good to go.
Yeah, I think that we would probably turn it on over the weekend, so we could make sure nothing froze and broke.
Yeah, yeah, because I'm not sure when they're restarting, but we'll get that, we'll get it going.
Okay.
Yeah, I can try it this week, it's supposed to warm right up this week, so.
Right.
We'll be out t-shirts, it's Vermont or t-shirt weather on Wednesday, it's gonna be 40.
This is true.
Well, town meeting is on Tuesday, so it'd be nice to have it live in.
Okay, I'll make sure, yeah, that's right, I'll 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 make a point of making sure the water works this weekend, if there's a problem, I'll let Robin know.
Thank you. Very good.
And we have our our Zoom meeting Thursday, right?
Yeah, the pre-town meeting, yeah.
That's on the card, the connection information.
Yeah, 6:30, 6:30. And Steve Fryhafter will be, is gonna be the moderator. And it'll be. Hosted by Hardwick Television, so.
Very good.
They'll be recording it, so if people aren't able to be there at that meeting, they can at least, if they want to. Follow, you know, what was discussed at the at the pre-town meeting. Or actually, it's a, was a requirement in in going to Australian ballot that there be some type of virtual.
Sure, yeah.
Meeting, so, and we we usually do it anyway. I'd be curious, kind of anticipating that there might be more people attending this than there would have been if.
It's possible, or less, because you've had the opportunity to vote now for a week or so.
Right, yeah, yeah, so.
It's kind of surprising that people, so many people have voted before they even got their town report.
Have there been people voting already?
Yeah, well, it's odd because the statute requires that absentee ballots be available by February 10th. But the town report doesn't have to be available until 10 days before the meeting. Within those 10 days is when the information.
I wondered that, because I said we got the ballots but no report, then there, so that's what it is, okay, perfect. Doesn't have to make sense, right? Yeah, because I was always would wait till I had information, but who knows, we'll see.
Hello.
There we go, so, anything else at all to? Discuss while we're together here?
Thought of one more thing.
Okay.
At school driveway. It's still, people come out and this happened to me twice, they're coming out. And I'm going up the road and they swing around the wall and there's not a lot of sight distance and they don't slow down. There's a lot of area of snow there that could just be plowed.
So you're thinking the bank, because the last time I checked it, I could see both directions really well, the bank's high enough, where should, they should be cleaned up?
Are you in a truck?
I'm in my pickup, yeah, obviously, car would be lower, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll talk to Chuck about clearing the bank, so I gotta talk to him tomorrow, I'm making, I know.
Just plow a little closer to the to the concrete wall there.
You know, maybe if they're coming down to clean out in front of the town hall, they could just swing over there too with the bucket, if they if they're bringing the bucket down.
Yeah, because I think, I think for Robin's point, they should come down probably later this week is or even Monday. With the loader and clean, we'll clean up, do a real good cleanup in front of the building there.
Okay.
I mean, even if the if the tenants will move their cars. I mean, even if, if the tenants will move their car, there's some huge piles of snow there, I'd just soon have them clean that whole area right out, it's a big mess.
Yeah, I know the understanding with the tenants is that basically that's their driveway and they're responsible for that, but yeah, it is.
But again, with, with a bucket loader, we make one pass through there and clean that mess right up.
Yeah, it'd be nice, yeah.
Because there's a pile of snow as high as the porch roof.
If you want me to be in touch with them, I could do that, but.
Maybe if, if we.
Let me talk to Chuck about what day that he can get their, wouldn't it make sense, Robin, if I had him clean that out Monday, that'll get it clean?
Yes.
As soon as, or close to town meeting as we can get, and if they're agreeable to that, Diana, I'll send you an email about contacting them to maybe move their cars.
Okay.
I'm sure they would appreciate getting that.
The poor bugger, I've told you, his snowbanks are as high as the porch roof.
Well, they're just plowing, you know, shoveling their snow onto the deck there and that's.
Yeah, so, so it's not a big deal to scoop through there, it's one push.
Okay, great. So I, I won't call Greg, I'll let you call Chuck.
I'll call Chuck and I'll just tell Chuck to have them go over there with the loader on Monday and clean that whole area up really nice.
Yeah, that sounds good.
What else, so you said clear for the town hall, school drive, what was the third thing for Chuck?
Well, the, I guess, in front of the, the apartment building too.
Town hall, she is, okay, right. Right.
Okay. Anything else?
Diana. Before I get on, did you mention anything about the call from Darlene Richardson?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so Diane, if you could send me, I, I know you sent me that contact information once and I. Lost it. Send it again, yeah, and I'll, I'll check in with her.
I remember the third thing I was going to talk to Chuck about is the complaint from Wheeler Hill, which is our normal, all this. Make him aware that there was a grumpy person and he can.
Oh, oh, right, yeah, yeah. Yeah. I, I sort of understand that situation, so.
I just drove up there with my pickup in three inches of snow. I didn't want to bring the fire trucks up without a chains on them, but I made it.
Yeah, yeah. Anything else? I feel like an auctioneer, I should say.
I was really happy, it was, there was reported smoke in the apartment there, but it turned out just to be odor from the wood stove next door, thank God. That's why I was back so quick.
Uh huh, good.
Because I was having heartburn of figuring out how to put a fire out up on that hill with all the.
Yeah, yeah. So hearing nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
All right, good night.